Please.
That's why I'm sorry.
It'll be Government Code Section 54952.3. The members of the City Council Successor Agency are entitled to receive a total of 300 per month because of being elected to the City Council. They receive no other compensation for sitting as a member of the successor agency.
Good, thank you. So at this moment, we will be going into closed session. So. And we'll let the public know to if there are any decisions we need.
And just to let the public know, closed session will go on until about 6:00 PM or until they're ready. So we'll have a splash screen here. And once this closed session is concluded, we'll give everyone about three minutes to join back in. You can stay on the line. There'll just be a screen and everyone will be muted until closed session is over. So. And where's the closed session? Melissa, a quick question, is only council, you and legal counsel?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I haven't seen that Joseph has logged in yet.
No, I'm on here.
Are you? Oh, there you are. I see your name now. Thanks, Joseph.
Am I not supposed to be on here? This is Stan Harbor.
The meeting's just started, so the public portion, and then just gonna go into closed session.
Okay.
Melissa, am I supposed to be on closed session as well?
I'm not. Who is speaking?
I'm sorry, it's Rusty.
Rusty, no. Yes, I'd like you at least in part of the closed session, please. Thank you.
So we have Alejandro Ramirez, Alvaro Praciado, Eduardo Valle, Glenda Woolley, Joseph Berry, Melissa and Pablo Hernandez. That should be everyone.
I'm still here.
Right, I'm gonna put you guys in a different room for.
Okay.
Did you get Rusty Stivers?
My understanding, he doesn't have to be in closed session. So it's just you guys.
Now Melissa just said he had to be there for part of it.
My apologies.
Please.
Rusty will be in it now, too.
Thank you.
All right, send a smoke signal when you guys are done. Ciao. All right.
Did you have a set time you're gonna want us to come back?
Usually after six is when closed session's over. Alvaro, Melissa and Pablo, you guys have to click join for the breakout room. Should be on your screen. There we go. There's the last one. There we go. So all the council members and whoever needs to be on closed sessions there. Stanley, until, we'll have this room open until they come back. So you're more than happy to just turn off your mic and video and just wait till after six?
Okay, great, appreciate it.
Of course.
Not sure. There it goes, okay. All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and start our recycling updates. All right, thank you, everybody. We are going to go over updates regarding the new legislation AP 1826 and commercial site assessments. Some contamination updates as well as events in the community and some new legislation that is coming soon to us, starting this year and next year as well. AB 1826, we've heard a lot about this law requiring businesses to divert food waste and green waste from the trash or the landfill. And our new recycling coordinator, Mariana, she's with me here tonight and she's put this PowerPoint together as well. She is working with each of the businesses and the schools, as well as the multifamily properties, to assure that they are in compliance. Here, I'm showing some of the places, locations that coordinators have stopped by to visit to either assess recycling, but also to give them information about the new law, AB 1826, and let them know what that means to them. So any food waste generator, like a restaurant or a cafe or a bakery, is gonna be knowledgeable about AB 1826 and also will let them know if they have to implement based on the amount of food waste that they throw away each week. But you can see here, Family Dollar is doing a great job, as well as Chevron. The commercial outreach, as you know, we go door to door and we have not done that since the COVID-19 and the orders of social distancing. So these 76 site visits all occurred prior to that, either later part of last year into January, February. And, and of course, as I mentioned, we're always making sure they're up to date about the legislative recycling laws, 341 and 1826. In addition to contamination, we are checking the containers to make sure that there's low contamination. And if we see a high increase, then we'll go ahead and provide posters and even speak to the businesses and the employees that are there the day that we stop by to go over what our findings are. Some of the businesses that we visited include the Cafe Gallery, Super Burger and the Chevron and Family Dollar. The multifamily visits were helpful this time around. We were able to meet with the property owners. There was 27 site assessments that were done, like I mentioned, from the later part of last year to the first two months of this year. We were able to assist with some bulky item issues. We noticed, and this is not just with Avonall, many multifamily properties are dealing with either mattresses thrown out and placed either on the side of the trash or recycling. Sometimes they even throw it, these bulky items like mattresses and furniture inside our containers and we're not able to pick them up. So working and connecting with the property owners is very important. So we have a contact person and we can take care of it very quickly. We are helping the city of Avonall to increase recycling efforts by having a contamination program. It's ongoing with our drivers as well as our recycling coordinators. And this graph is showing you the overview of each month of the number of tags that were placed on a recycling container. And residents are receiving education. So we're tagging, but we're also mailing information to them or calling them by phone if possible to talk to them about the contamination tag they received on the recycling container. Here are examples of our brochures, our flyers that we distribute and we make sure to always have these flyers at City Hall because we know a lot of the residents usually stop by to pay their bill. We know that this month has not been that type of activity going on. So we are trying to get creative in different ways to educate the public currently and maybe into the next month. We'll keep you up to date on how we're doing that. CND data, construction and demolition recycling is always a very important program to the city because the state, it really does promote cities to divert construction and demolition material. They want, the state of California will come and visit and ask the city staff and Mid Valley specific questions in regards to diversion of CND projects. So here is a slide showing you each month and the number, the tons that were diverted for each individual month. And our goal is to continue to work with the city and the contractors in town. We know that it's very easy for them to take it to Avonall landfill. So that's gonna be a challenge. But when contractors have green waste or wood waste, we really wanna educate them to take it to Kachergan Farms. So that way it is diverted and composted instead of placed at the landfill. Some of the events that took place at the end of the year, Operation Gobble Gobble was a success. We had a recycling coordinator out there with Isaac, our district manager, and gave out some turkey and Thanksgiving feast. So that was a lot of fun, in addition to giving a donation for the community during this event. And here's some pictures to go with it. There's Isaac and also our group with, that was there with the volunteers. That was really nice. We'll do that each year. Household hazardous waste is consistent in these months of people not knowing where to place syringes, even expired medication. But it's really nice that in town, there is a location for residents to take it to, which is convenient. And we are wanting to continue the education so they make sure they don't put it in the trash or the recycling or even their organics container. So the Avonall Police Department has these drop-off bins and they're secured and it's easy and convenient for the residents of Avonall. So we wanna make sure this gets out as much as possible. One of the upcoming regulations that are gonna affect the residents of Avonall is SB 1383. This law is going to tag on to AB 1826 and it's gonna require the residents to divert food waste from their households. So if they compost in their backyard, that does count as a diversion program. But if they don't compost in their own backyard, then it's, this law is gonna require residents to place food scraps along with their green waste inside the organics cart that they have at home. So we'll, we started a fun little activity that we hope during the month of April, the residents are able to get the information because it's a contest. We called it the Organics Residents Contest. And what it is, it entails the residents to place food waste inside their organics cart and we are gonna give prizes out. So I believe the information is going out through the utility bill with a flyer providing the guidelines of this contest. It's a fun way to introduce food waste going inside the organics without getting very technical about the law. And so we're hoping this is the introduction to letting residents know that it's okay to put food waste inside the organics cart. This is just providing, this slide is giving us more information about SB 1383 and the goals that it, the reasons and behind adopting this regulation is to reduce the emissions in the atmosphere. And it just means additional waste reduction such as food banks, diverting food waste from the schools and making sure that the food waste that is generated in town is kept out of the landfill. AB 1827 is actually gonna be adopted in past. It's gonna be effective this year, July 1st, 2020. This one is, this law is requiring any restaurant that is like a fast food restaurant and you get to order and eat in their front of the house to place containers so that you and I can place our bottles of water that are empty and any food left over inside a recycling food waste container. So we can't just throw our tray of food scraps that we didn't finish either at a McDonald's, Burger King, or any type of restaurant that doesn't have a waiter or waitress helping us. If it's a full-service restaurant, it's not, those type of restaurants are not required to comply with AB 1827. It's only if we go in order and we have to dispose of our food waste on our own. Those types of restaurants are gonna be required to set up a recycling trash and an organics container under this regulation. We have postponed currently our cleanup events that we assist cities with. I know with Avonall, it's a little different, but we do plan a senior pickup during that time. So we have a date that is gonna be suspended and we'll provide you updates on to when that is gonna be taking place. Due to COVID-19, you know, we had to unfortunately suspend a lot of these special events that residents rely on. But we hope to have an upcoming date soon so we can go ahead and help our seniors out in the community of Avonall. And that is all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Is there any questions?
This is Mayor Pro Tim Woolley, I have a question.
Hi.
You. We gotta get some definitions on these words. You kept talking about the organic cart. That?
The organic cart is a new term. You are absolutely correct. I'm using it more often because I wanna get used to our customers, our residents, our business owners getting used to that term as well. But organics is basically defined as the cart that we know as the green waste cart. So green waste is now defined under organics. And organics is defined as food and green waste, food scraps and green waste.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Is there any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you for your information and presentation.
Thanks for having us. It's great to see those of you that are on the video. Hope everybody's staying safe and healthy.
Yes, thank you.
We hope to see you guys soon. Take care.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
We should say.
Okay. So with that, we move on to Item B2, which is the King's Ivan, Identifying Violations Affecting Neighborhoods, presentation. Veronica Aguirre.
Hi, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, okay, good.
Yes.
And I'm gonna, I was on my phone and on the computer and I thought, well, if you can't hear me, I'll just go to one of the others. So I'm gonna hang up now. I think, Anthony, were you gonna share my screen or how are we gonna do this?
You have it ready on your computer?
Yeah.
Okay, I just made you a co-host, so accept that and do share screen.
Okay, where?
Right at the very middle, bottom middle says share screen. Then I'll ask you what window you wanna share.
Okay, hold on. Okay. Okay, so good evening, Mayor and City Council and everyone else on the call. Thank you for having me here tonight from the comfort of everyone's probably living room, I guess, maybe. I came on because I wanted to discuss our Ivan community network, which is called Identifying Violations Affecting Neighborhoods, Ivan, and which is a self-reporting tool and is an online resource that allows members of the community to report any environmental violations that are occurring around them to the proper authorities. The Ivan program also contains an environmental justice task force that meets once a month to discuss reported incidents and the follow-ups by authorities with community members. The Ivan program brings together community, regulatory agencies, and environmental justice advocates to provide a better environment for all through conversations and a forum to discuss accountability. So at the first page, I just pretty much said, what does it mean to be healthy, right? And then healthy together. And this kind of, these are some of the partners that are in. We're part of an idling, it's called an ida coalition. And we have various partners that, there's a different Ivan in different areas, starting from Coachella, Imperial Valley, to Larry King's Kern. We have a number of Ivans, which I'll show you later on as we speak. So when you go to our King's Ivan network, here's our website. The website that you see right here, you can issue reports through environment that have anything, you know, from various different types of topics. And this is why it is important. Using the King's Ivan, you can report environmental violations to the right people. It is anonymous unless you wanna give your information. It is both in English and Spanish. And you can report at any time, day or night. And you can also track your report and agency response. So in King's Ivan, it's not government. So if it's an emergency, obviously you need to call 911. We always recommend that you report to the agency first. So say it's like an air issue or a concern. You obviously would contact the Seminole Air Pollution District, you know. Or if it's in regards to pesticide drift, you'll want to contact the Department of Pest Control Regulation, who has also a, you know, an app that you can go call Casper and you could issue your reports there. We recommend that you also do it through King's Ivan because it ensures accountability and transparency. So examples of issues to report. Illegal dumping of trash or motor oil, agricultural burning, drifting pesticide, unusual admissions from smokestacks, chemical spills, flooding, odors from dairies, lack of traffic lights and stop signs, unsafe workplaces, damaged roadways and water contamination. These are just a few examples of things that, you know, that people can report on our Ivan network. And how does it work? So you could text, the number that, you could text us. You can email, you could call, you could do it online. And we also meet every second Wednesday of the month from 2:00 to 4:00. And we do it, we have a conference line as well as in-person meetings. Right now, we had one yesterday and we obviously didn't have an in-person meeting, but we did have a conference line available. Just to give an example, the people that came on, you know, to our meeting, we had Cal Recycle, we had Cal EPA, we had the US EPA, we had the Water District, we had Department of Pest Control Regulation, we had DTSC. They were on the call and just a number, and the Department of Conservation was on the call. We also had Kings County on the call. So it's just a number of people. We had a few members of different communities like Kettleman City because we are Kings, King's Ivan. So we actually deal with any city within Kings County. And they're welcome to get on the call and, you know, and address any issues or just listen in. Maybe they had issued a report and they wanna find out what the outcome was. And it also gives you a chance, if you have a question, you have, you get a chance to actually have a conversation with one, somebody from a different state agency. And it's making those connections. So that's important. What to include in your Ivan report? So on here, you can put, like I said, it could be anonymous or you can, you're welcome to put your name. We do not disclose any personal information. This is only if you want a phone call back or you want to know, you want somebody to call you or, you know, it doesn't matter if you give your name or not. Up here on the top, it's the incident title. So like, for example, say there was somebody, your neighbor was dumping. You saw your neighbor dumping some kind of disgusting oil or something in their garbage and you wanted to report that, you know. You could report, you know, some type of there. And then in the different categories, there's, you know, it'll say like air, it'll say illegal dumping. You know, there's a number of different categories that you could, that you could choose. So then you kinda give a brief description. So you'll put the description of whatever you saw. And if you have pictures or anything for proof or whatever, then you can also upload any kind of proof, videos, you know, anything that you wish, if you have it. And then you submit the report. Once you submit the report, that report goes to us, to the LEAP Institute. We verify. And once we validate the report, it immediately goes to whatever department. So if that was like there, it could possibly go to anywhere from like Cal Recycle or go to Kings County. It goes to a number of different agencies based on whatever the category is. Sorry. So anyways, so we could. So group practice, well, I don't know, I just kinda gave you that example, an individual. I welcome you guys to try it, you know, go on to, I don't know if I could share. I kinda had it open, but I don't know if I am able to share that portion of there. I wanted to kinda go through and do a tester to kinda give you an idea of how to do the report. But you guys could probably do that on your own. And that's pretty much it, you know. It's very simple, it's very easy to do. Like we have a phone number if people are intimidated. Some people may be intimidated by this and they don't think that they can do it. You know, we have the phone number and they could call us and we'll do the report for you. And then sometimes, you know, through our connections, we're able to also, you know, contact the air district. We have, we have a lot of different contacts. So we'll make sure that we have very close connections with all the different agencies so that they're aware of the concern. And we always try to get back to everybody just to kinda give them, you know, whatever the case may be. But I think transparency is what's always important. And I think this is what, you know, will work. I don't know, I think that's pretty much, if anybody has any questions in regards to our Ivan network.
Questions for Ms. Aguirre? Okay. Veronica, Ms. Aguirre, thank you for your presentation. And this is good stuff to consider.
It is. It's very good to consider because it also teaches the community to also be responsible when they see, when they see certain things. They don't have to second guess. I know a lot of times people tend to, you know, is that wrong? Is that right? Well, this is the way to find out. It's about, you know, working together. It's not, it's not a program that's going to make a, it builds a team. So all these different agencies all work together to address these different issues. And it's a way of helping. For example, I had one, you know, I had a, I had an Ivan report that came in about a concern on Seventh Street and that there was a blind spot, you know. And I contacted Councilman Praciado. I sent him a picture and he helped me take care of that issue by making the contact with the guys from Public Works. And they went out and they painted that. And, you know, and that's what it is, you know, that's what the Ivan network is about. It's about working together, seeing a problem. We understand that everyone's super busy and you can't get to every, you can't, you can't possibly, you know, fix every problem. But when people are working together as a group, that's how things happen. That's how changes, changes are always good, you know, because that's how we all manage to work together. So I would hope and invite, you know, I haven't seen any of you guys attend any of my Ivan meetings, but I really hope that, you know, one day soon, you know, on. but I really hope that, you know, one day soon, you know, on one of these months, you guys will surprise us and pop in and just see what it's about, you know? And so, but anyways, thanks again. And if anybody has any more questions, you know, well, nobody had any questions, but oh, yes, but
Yes. I, I once, a long time ago, I took a tour in a bus from, I believe, Hanford. We went to Strafford, Kettleman City where they did have illegal dumping. And I think they closed access to the aqueduct where people were dumping and doing illegal dumping. So I do believe that Ivan program does help communities to fix some of the problems. And I do believe in working together to solve most of the issues that sometimes is very hard for one person to get results, good results in order to benefit his community. How, how long you been working with Ivan program?
I, I've been doing it for almost two years now. Ivan, Ivan has been in this area. Well, the Kings Ivan has been in this area for about four. I took it on about two years ago. So we've really been, we've really been trying to, because Avonel, you know, Avonel and Kettleman City are, you know, are closer to, you know, are some of our local more close, you know, communities. And, and they need, we don't always have, you know, there's not a lot of, I don't know, what would you say, like the county, the county, Kings County, Hanford has, you know, all their, the Kings County, you know, everybody there, right? So we're, we were trying, what we're trying to do is really trying to focus on the disadvantaged communities that don't have the ability to voice different concerns. And, and working with, with the local officials, state officials and all these agencies and building a, a team between the community and the agencies. So they can work together and they understand what some of these concerns are, you know? And, and I do remember that is, that was the toxic tour that we took. And we're actually planning another one. We're hoping to, this coming year with, if everything goes well. And we'll let you all know when that's coming. But we, and, and all it is, is just bringing awareness so that people understand. You know, I know that they had mentioned about the, the area out here outside of Avonel, there was a lot of pictures where people were doing illegal dumping. We're actually working on something right now with, with Cal Recycle and, and illegal dumping. And we're hoping to, to do a cleanup of that area. And along with cleanup, we want to bring education so that we can educate people and teach them how to report this and how not to be afraid. When you see something like that, don't just look at it and then just like, oh God, I can't believe they're throwing stuff there. Actually do something about it, you know? And, and so we're really hoping this coming year, we're really going to bring some really great, do some really great outreach to the community. And especially with AB617 and our air monitors coming from Avonel, coming into Avonel and all the great information that that's going to contain to, and show the community how to use it, how to go on and know what the information is and understand what's going on around you. So, and that'll probably be another presentation later on that will, will, my partner Ruben Rodriguez, he'll probably come on and, and discuss the AB617. We currently have an air monitor here in Avonel that is working and it is collecting data as we speak. And we're pretty excited about it, but we also have some really great news coming up probably in the next few months. And we'll be, we're going to be really happy to be able to present that at the next meeting. Thanks to AB617 and some of the work that we're, we're planning on doing. So, but thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your presentation and dedication to improve communities, disadvantaged communities in Central Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, everybody.
Hello, all. Just give us one minute. Mayor's laptop crashed right now, so we're just putting, booting it right back up. One second.
Okay, I'm back online. Was there any other questions for Ms. Aguirre? Or comments about her presentation? Okay. Hearing none. Well, we move on to item number eight, which is public comment and announcements and unscheduled appearances. City clerk, can you, will you please read that paragraph?
Yes, I will do that. Any person may directly address the city council agency on this time on any items on the agenda or any other items of interest that the public that is within subject matter jurisdiction of the city council, state law prohibits any member of the city council agency from commenting or acting on matters not on the agenda. Three minutes are allowed per person.
Thank you. Is there any comment? I know Chief, you mentioned that you needed time for during public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I was going to let the public go first if there's any comments.
Very good.
Yeah, if you don't mind me interjecting, so what we're going to do first is I know there's someone on telephone who'd like to comment. And then if anyone who's on the Zoom meeting right now, either you guys can turn on your video and write it in the chat. And then we'll let, give you a chance to speak or you can just write the question in the chat and I will read it for you. So we'll start off first with anyone on the phone. So give me one second. Let's see, Alicia.
Anthony, I'm on, if you guys can hear me. Ready?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So good evening, everyone. My name is Alicia Hakovul and I'm a senior field rep for State Senator Melissa Hurtado. Just want to thank everyone for accommodating the community. You know, via, it's new times, a new era, and so I think we all understand why we need to conduct business this way. But certainly want to thank the staff at the city level for all the work they've done. And also just want to share that we want to continue to make our staff for Senator Hurtado available to the community. While we are no longer, well, we're working from home now. And so our offices, our office doors aren't open, but we remain committed to helping our community folks. I know these are anxious times. So I just want to let you guys know, if you hear community being worried, we're, you know, there's a lot of unemployment applications in the thousands and the hundreds of thousands being submitted every day. And if you hear community saying, you know, that they're having difficulty submitting their application or that they've encountered any other issues with their unemployment apps, please forward them to us and we are more than happy to work our back channels to try to get answers for them. And also just kind of a shameless plug, would like to encourage everyone to follow Senator Hurtado on her Facebook page. Because that is how she is communicating with our community. Typically staff is out in the, out in, you know, various communities doing their thing. But again, with stay-at-home orders that we are required to follow as staff. Social media has played a great role, obviously. They can still call our office line and those office lines are rolled over to staff's cell phone numbers. So we will always, if we're not on a conference call, we'll always do our best to pick up and, and be responsible and respond, you know, in a timely manner to our constituents. So I just want to encourage, you know, the staff or the city council members that if you, you know, you hear community having issues with EDD or even DMV, that's the, that's the next big call that we get in our office. Please feel free to forward them to us. And like I said, we will do our best to, to help resolve those issues. And so again, you know, we're, we're here to serve and, and just because we're not sitting at our desk doesn't mean we're not working. We're, we're working. So, yeah. So I just kind of wanted to, to offer that up. And, you know, Fernando, I heard your presentation and if you'd like to send me an email on that grant and who it was to, you know, again, I'm happy to follow up with, with that as well. So with that, I thank you for your time.
Lisa, before you, you leave, there is a question from the Zoom audience. Do you go, Alicia, can we provide your email and phone information on our Facebook pages to let our community know your office is willing to help?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
Thank you.
So do you need my email address or?
We have it. We can share it or
Okay, yeah, absolutely. And the Senator has a website, so all that information is, is on her website as well, as well as our staff address. And, you know, we have bilingual staff, so you know, if, you know, our constituents are monolingual Spanish, we've got staff to help, so, including myself.
I'm going to share your information, your email on the chat.
Okay. Fabulous. Thank you, Tony. I appreciate that.
Is there any other questions for Ms. Hakovul?
Just one thing, it's Alicia Hakovul for all the input and, you know, information that she's providing to our community.
You're very welcome.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Ms. Hakovul, thank you for all that information and the concern.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
So I'll interject real quick. I know we have a few other guests over the phone. So if any of you would like to speak, you have to press star six. I'll give you thirty seconds if you'd like to say anything. Now then we'll go on to, I know we have a few other comments. Just give it a few more seconds. All right. I know the next person who would like to comment is Veronica, so if you're still on, just go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yes, I just, I wanted to bring something to your attention that I've noticed. I've actually noticed well before the, the COVID-19, with the pandemic. But I also wanted to bring your attention. There's so many people on like social media and places like that that are selling things, like selling food and offering, selling haircuts, you know, willing to come to your home. And I'm just wondering if that should be a concern? If they are following all the proper safety measures? And, you know, if this, if this is actually something that, that should be done. Am I, and also, I also wanted to mention that I, I know that our local businesses that already have an establishment, that have overhead, that follow all the rules, get the permits and licensing, health and, you know, food safety codes and they're following everything. I, I kind of think this is unfair to them when people are selling, you know, the same kind of stuff without any of the, you know, if without having a location, without having the overhead and everything else and not, and maybe they're not even being safe. So I just, I just kind of wanted to bring that up and seeing if there's something that, that the city could maybe look into. You know, if there, you know, and, and not that I don't want people to make money. I understand, you know, it's hard and everyone needs to try to find a way. But, you know, I also think that, you know, as people, you know, our local businesses, we really need to try to protect them and keep them going as well. And when, and when that gets out of hand and you see people, I saw somebody on Facebook, the other are not, you know, on the marketplace and they're selling pizzas, you know? And then you think of the gallery and these are, are restaurants that also contribute to the community and contribute to organizations and functions and stuff like this. And, and then you, you see that and I don't know, I just kind of find it unfair as well as unsafe. So I just wanted to bring that to your guys' attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Veronica. If I may, Mayor and members of council, thank you. And we will work with community development and our code enforcement on this. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Melissa. Appreciate that.
Thank you for that information, Ms. Aguirre. Any, anybody else? Comments, questions for Ms. Aguirre? Okay, Tony, next.
Anybody on the chat or video on Zoom? I think the only one left would be Rusty. We'll get, just a quick announcement. We'll let Rusty go, but for those on Facebook, I know there's a lag, so I'm announcing it now. If you guys have a question, please type it in the comments of the video that you're watching right now. Humberto will share those with us if there are any questions or comments. Otherwise, we'll let Rusty go and then we'll wait to hear from Humberto. If nothing, then we'll move on. So Rusty, your turn.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to speak tonight as your emergency services director for just a second. It's been a very tragic week in the nation. New York and California has seen a major increase in deaths due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And it's more, it's so, so important, more, more now than before that we maintain our shelter in place. Rules and regulations provided by the governor's office. I know Easter holidays is coming up. We're not here to take away, I'm not here to take away the Easter holiday by any means, but I think we need to be smart and limit our social gatherings to a bare minimum. Hopefully, hopefully the public will adhere to this so we can get through this thing together. And we had, like I said, I might have said earlier, we had a party last weekend, twenty or thirty people there. And I just see this weekend as a big, another outbreak of that as well. So, you know, public peer pressure helps. That would certainly help us out as well. And we don't want to be the bad guy here. There's a, the governor talked about a social contract initially. And I think Avonel as a whole is doing a fairly decent job of it, but there's also room for improvement as well. Just want to remind everybody, shelter in place. Cover your face, wash your hands, don't touch your face as hard as that is sometimes. But as a community, you know, it's a very, it's a small community, strong community and proud community. And we can get through this together. So if anybody has any questions for me, I'm certainly here to answer it.
Questions for the chief or comments?
I don't have a question. So seeing next week as a more, another crucial week of, are you planning on implementing additional restrictions to our community?
I have not planned that yet. I just, you know, we, we do see gatherings outside stores and other establishments and we are educating people to, to go shelter in place. I know some cities have, I don't know if we're there yet. It's something I can certainly talk with Melissa about. But the, the social gatherings in backyards and barbecues are, are kind of our priority right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? Any questions from the chat room? Tony?
None at this time, so I'm just pass it over to Humberto. If you can let us know if anyone on the Facebook side has any questions.
It looks like at the moment, we don't have any comments from Facebook, so I think we're good to go.
All right, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. So we're moving on to item number nine. Thank you, Tony. Which is public hearing. Public hearing to consider ordinance to amend Avonel Municipal Code 64.08 regarding water services, charges, billings and delinquencies in the city of Avonel.
Mayor, members of council, this is an item that Dawn Perkins is working on. So I'm going to ask that she present the report. Dawn, are you on the line?
I am. I'm trying to unmute.
Okay.
We have been working on this water shut-off policy for several months now. And due to the complexity of trying to mesh what is current. And due to the complexity of trying to mesh what is current, um, our court, current ordinance with the, um, new policy that the state has brought out in SB nine nine eight. Um, we are asking for a little bit more time and to, uh, table this until the next meeting so that we can finish, um, matching the two, um, ordinances together.
Okay. Very good. Is there any questions for Dawn or comments?
I do have a question. Since, since the deadline for, um, SB nine eighty eight was April first, are there any fines that the city will be expecting? Or is there a, an extension of that, um, to being?
Not that, not that I am aware of, um, Councilmember Presiado. However, in the executive order by the governor, the, um, water shut offs have been suspended until May third first. Um, we are not allowed to shut off utilities for anyone. So it is, um, the thought that this gives us a little bit extra time, um, since that's what basically this water shut off policy is, is to extend the amount of time that people have to pay or to request, for payment arrangements in order to, um, not have their shut, water shut off. But there are several cities that are still in the process of, um, doing the same very thing. And, um, it is their belief also that how horrible all of this is, um, that's going on right now, this at least gives us a little bit of breathing room.
Yes, saying that, I also believe that it is, uh, for the, this intend to, to have a fair policy for.
Yes.
If I may, Mayor, I, I do have a comment. This has been, um, the process has been very taxing. And yes, having, uh, the new regulations and the orders coming down from the state, understandable. It's a tough time for, you know, um, many, many. But what we're having to do is to basically rewrite, uh, the policy on how we handle billing and delinquencies, and it's not easy. It's been a little bit difficult. We have, uh, a couple of examples that we're working from. Our attorney's office has worked very well with this, but it is confusing. So I want to thank Dawn. She, uh, has been working on this and really do appreciate her efforts, but we will have it to you hopefully within, by the next meeting, if not, uh, the meeting following. But we appreciate your patience with this. It is a very big undertaking, even though it looks small, it's not. It's, it's very large and, uh, really will affect the way that we run business, but understandable. It's to help community members. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Melissa. Is there any other questions or comments? If not, uh, we need a motion to table this item for the next or the following meeting.
I do make a motion to table this, uh, into next, uh, city council meeting.
That's the twenty-third.
Mayor Ovay, what we would ask is that the public hearing be continued, please?
Okay, very good. So that motion would need to be to continue public hearing as well.
So it's continued to the twenty-third because it's gotta be continued to a date certain?
Well, okay, we're still under one meeting a month, oh no, now since we have this, so we should be back to twice a month.
That will depend on what council feels is appropriate, understanding things are a little, confusing at this time. We can certainly, if you would like, we can schedule a special meeting and maybe consider this one item, or council can look at continuing it to the first meeting in May.
Okay. So with that in mind, then, uh, we'll just consider this if need be as a special item, special meeting to deal with this item.
We could.
Otherwise, we'll wait till next month, the first meeting of the next month.
So we would continue till April twenty-third, and if for some reason we do not need, there is a process that we can follow to continue to the first meeting in May.
Sounds good.
Okay, uh, is everyone, uh, in the council clear on this matter?
Yes.
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 Okay. Very good, then. Now, we need, uh, a motion to table this item with continuing the hearing to the next, uh, meeting on the twenty-third or the first meeting of May.
I do make that motion as presented.
There's the first. Is there a second motion?
I will second it.
Okay, thank you, Pablo. Yeah, first and second, roll call, please.
Yes, Councilman Ramirez. Councilman Hernandez. Councilman Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilman Preciado.
Yes.
Mayor Prochem Woolley.
Aye.
Mayor Ovay.
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez. I can, Councilman Ramirez.
Aye.
Thank you.
So that's five zero. It's been tabled. Okay, so we will, we move on to item number ten, which is old business. And it is considered second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero one. Ordinance amended Title Nine of the municipal code by changing the zone classification from good, community commercial, high density residential and open space park to low density residential R one for the following real estate property.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, this item, as you might recall, uh, was first presented to the council at the last meeting on March twelfth, and we introduced the ordinance change, uh, that would make possible the subdivision at, uh, the southeast corner of Corcoran and Kern avenues for the Alroto group. And we are just recommending, uh, by motion that the council waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance, uh, number twenty twenty dash zero one, um, which would enact the ordinance and would cause the ordinance to take effect thirty days after its passage.
Very good. Any questions or comments? Okay, if not, we need a motion for, to pass resolution twenty twenty dash zero one.
I saw move.
I'm waiving the reading, right?
Yes, we're waving the second reading. Is, is that your motion, Mrs. Woolley?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we have a first. Is there a second?
Oh, second it.
Okay, we have first and second.
Councilman Ramirez.
Yes.
Councilman Hernandez.
Yes.
Councilman Preciado.
Yes.
Mayor Prochem Woolley. Mayor Ovay.
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's, uh, five zero.
The ordinance will go into effect, um, in thirty days and it will be published within fifteen days. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager, okay. With that, we move on to item ten B, which is consider extending local emergency declared on March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty.
Yes. Mayor and members of council, on March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, the Avenue City Council, took the action to declare a local emergency due to the existence of, uh, or threatened existence of a local emergency. That's specific wording, and this is regarding the COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, what we need is that the declaration should be reviewed and considered for, uh, one of two actions. One is to reaffirm that a local emergency continues to exist or to make a finding that a local emergency no longer exists. If council chose to, uh, find that the emergency no longer exists, it would have to be by title resolution at this point. But what, uh, based on what we have heard, what we're hearing in the news, uh, I believe the local emergency, uh, should remain in effect. I would like to make just a, a few comments regarding this. Is, this is, the city of Avonale has experienced several emergencies over the past couple of decades. And, but we have never had an emergency that we could not see or physically see or touch. Uh, we've dealt with emergencies such as, uh, broken water lines, windstorms, even a couple of earthquakes. But this pandemic is quite different in that we always see our statistics. So it makes it a little bit different. Um, sometimes it's as though things is, looks as though they're not moving, but they truly are. That's why the EOC Center, uh, has established, even though our Director of Disaster Services is our chief, and he's saying like, scale back the EOC calls, uh, to just once a week. We don't know where this is heading. We certainly don't, but I want to applaud the city uh, and our community members for all that they're doing to hopefully keep the spread, uh, in Avonale. So just be sure that the city is taking, we believe, the necessary steps to protect our community. And, uh, anyway, thank you for allowing me that. It, it, I just wanted to point out that this is a bit frustrating because we don't see damage. What we see are statistics and they're, um, they're very concerning. So, understanding not knowing if we will be meeting the second regular meeting, uh, in April, if we're going to go to, um, a meeting in May, what I'm asking is that the council consider, uh, the statement that is in, uh, that is part of this, um, staff report, which we have actually had in the past. This is for a drought. And it was Mr. Farley that actually drafted this language. But what it would allow is that it allows twenty-one days to extend the local emergency. And following the twenty-first day, there'd be another twenty-one days. So basically, we would be okay, uh, to extend the emergency for approximately forty-two days before it would have to be considered by the city council then to either reaffirm or to state that it no longer existed. At the current time, we are required to review it every fourteen days, but with the statement in place and action by council, we should be okay.
Okay.
So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you all.
Is there any questions or comments? And if not, we need by motion to extend the local emergency by forty-two days.
I do make a motion to extend the local emergency for forty-two days.
Okay, there's the first. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have first and second. Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Roll call, please.
Councilman Ramirez. Councilman Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilman Preciado.
Aye.
Mayor Prochem Woolley.
Aye.
Mayor Ovay.
All right, okay, five zero. So it's been extended for the next forty-two days.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we move on to, uh, section eleven, new business. Item A, consider adopting two resolutions required by the State Water Resources Control Board as part of the city CWSRF application for the sanitary sewer collection system and the water wastewater treatment plant improvement project.
Yes, uh, Mayor, members of the council, uh, good evening. Uh, this is Alfonso Manrique here. Um, these two resolutions are part of the, uh, new application that we're gonna be submitting for the sewer collection system improvements and wastewater treatment plan improvements. Um, there are conventional resolutions that the state requires for these type of application. One is authorizing the city manager to sign and file the financial system application. Um, the second one is stating that the city council will be reimbursed for expenditures incurred ahead of the approval of the disbursement request. There's, um, you said, two standard language applications that were already adopted when we submitted that, um, for the solar project. These are for the second project. And with the adoption of the environmental documents last month, um, and Travis and I were, we were there. Uh, now we have completed all the environmental packages, the technical package, and, uh, and the application is ready to be submitted. So the only, um, thing between, uh, prevents us from submitting that application is these, uh, are these two resolutions, these two standard, uh, resolutions authorizing the city manager to sign and file the application.
Very good. Is there any questions on this item? Or comments?
Yes, I have the, a question particularly on the improvements, you know, the, what, what kind of improvements are going to be done on the sewer collection system and the water treatment plant?
So, the, as part of these, uh, the planning study that we prepared, um, there was a, uh, we, we conducted, uh, a closed circuit television survey of, of the older parts of town, of the sewer collection lines. So we identified all those lines that needed, they were, either damaged inside or had sags, um, that prevented them from draining well. So those are documented in a report, in a technical report, and so those lines would either be, if, if feasible, they will be, um, whatever feasible, it will be lined with trenchless technologies. And whenever there's sags in the lines that unfortunately you can't do trenchless on those, there will be open trench and replaced segments of those lines. So there is, um, um, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but there is, uh, you know, some lines that need to be rehabbed and some lines that need to be, um, replaced. And at the wastewater treatment plant, there are some valves that need to be replaced and some, uh, headworks. I think there's, uh, some, uh, headwork screen and the clarifiers to be, being recoded. So there's, uh, you know, things that, you know, over, over time, um, have, have been, you know, the plant is aged and, and this recollection is aged, so it's just kind of catching up on, on, on those improvements.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions?
I'd like to make a comment, Mayor, members of council, please.
Sure.
Just, uh, we wanna thank Mr. Manrique. I know we wouldn't have been able to inspect our lines probably in none of our lifetimes. I think, I believe, I may be wrong. We have about, is it a hundred and sixty miles of line or is it eighty-one miles of line? Is it a hundred and sixty, somewhere around there?
Close to that, yeah.
Okay, uh, some of the, the line, the sewage line is the original line from the early nineteen thirties and some areas have collapsed. So we do not have funds, nor would we have funds, uh, for quite some time unless we looked at bonding out to actually pay for any type of repairs to this magnitude. So I want to thank Mr. Manrique for, uh, bringing this to our attention. I will also wanna thank public work staff for their help in this. But this would be for us a perfect opportunity to take advantage of funds that would help us improve our system. Thank you.
So, so with these application now, we're, we're, we'll be requesting another six million dollar grant uh, from the state to pay for the repairs of all these improvements. It's all gonna be a hundred percent grant, uh, for, to pay for the repair of, of these improvements. And, you know, um, you've been very patient throughout the whole process. Uh, you submitted the solar application. It took about a year or a little bit over a year. So I would expect, uh, this will be about the same. So maybe by, by, by next year around this time, we'll be signing that funding agreement and getting ready to, to make these improvements.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so I also would like to make a comment regarding, you know, we've been very successful, like you mentioned, for, uh, beauty taping those sewer lines. Was have most have about half a million dollars, uh, grant that we got and, uh, wanna thank Alfonso Manrique for, you know, being, uh, dedicating, uh, time and working together to bring those grants, uh, which bring a very positive, uh, funding flow toward community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Questions or comments? Okay, if not, we need a motion to approve the two resolutions. Okay, if not, we need a motion to approve the two resolutions, authorizing the city manager to sign and file financial assistance. And the resolution stating the city council intention to be reimbursed for expenditures incurred.
I would like to make a motion to re-resolution 2016 and 2017, is that correct?
No, it'll be 2017 and 2018.
Okay, so make a motion. House President.
Okay, we have a first. Is there a second? Okay, there's a first and second. Thank you, Mrs. Woolley. Roll call, please.
Councilman Ramirez.
Aye.
Councilman Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilman Preciado.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Woolley. Mayor Ovay.
Aye. Okay, five zero. It's been approved. Thank you, Mr. Manriquez.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Okay. So we move on to Item 11B, which is Approval of Track Map 2020-01 Corcoran Kern Subdivision and Approval of Subdivision Improvement Agreement for Corcoran Kern Subdivision. Fernando, are you online?
Oh, there you go. Members of the council, as you might recall from the previous council meeting, there's a project underway by the Alberta Group, also known as Avanale Developers LLC, to establish a subdivision at the southeast corner of Corcoran and Kern. And the council considered the environmental documents at the last meeting, which were also considered by the Planning Commission and approved by both bodies. Now, we're at the stage where we are seeking approval from the council for the final map, which is to be recorded with the county, which would establish the subdivision and the subdivided lots and, and the public improvements that are to be dedicated over to the city as part of the project. And so attached to the agenda, we've included the actual map as well as the subdivision agreement, which would bind the developer to construct the public improvements, which would include new streets and water sewer, curb gutter sidewalk improvements and had them, and, and also a park and a, and a detention basin within the development, which would then be dedicated over to the city for maintenance. And so the, the staff is, is recommending that the council approve by motion Track Number 2020-01 and authorize staff to sign the map and also to accept right-of-way dedications for all the roads and other public improvements and dedications identified in the map. And authorize the city manager to sign the subdivision improvement agreement with the developer for, for those public improvements.
Is there any questions for Fernando? Comments?
I do have a comment.
Okay.
You know, I am supporting this division, but at the same time, I would like to make a recommendation. By looking at this project, I believe that, you know, we were not informed previously regarding sites and we didn't have any information until, you know, the last meeting where the project was presented with more like a defined location. I would like to be notified in advance if we can about locations, because there may be other locations that may be more suitable to benefit other areas in, in, in the city than needing infrastructure, like southwest streets and, and, and gutters, cursing gutters. So I believe that if we plan in advance, when a big project like this one comes into our community, we plan it in advance, we can decide which areas will benefit the most from a project like this.
Thank you, Councilman Preciado. If I, if I may just elaborate on your comment. We had been working with the developer for several months prior to them beginning the project, and they did look at several sites that just for, you know, one reason or another, financial, economic, or just practical reasons, didn't pan out. I know they were looking at sites in the northwest part of town. As you know, there are very limited sites that are available for development within town. And they actually would have preferred other sites that didn't have to go through the environmental process. But this one was available, was for sale by the owner. And so there's other considerations. And we absolutely did do as much due diligence along with the developer, because they are putting a lot of money into this project. So I appreciate your comments. And, you know, I think we'll seek to keep you informed for future projects as soon, as early as we know about projects.
Yes, the specific reason I'm making this comment is because not too far from there, we all know about this area between Union and Corcoran, which is just next to the site that is being protected for this project. So that area already has property owners who are lacking infrastructure to build homes. And they're willing to build homes, but because of improvements and infrastructure, then unable to. And I think if that's how it would have been done right across from that location, probably several property owners would have benefited from that project.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Questions or comments? Okay, if not, we need a motion to include this three items. By motion, approve Track 2020-01 and authorize the city clerk to sign the map. By motion, accept the right-of-way dedication for all roads and other public dedication. Thirdly, resolution authorize a city manager to sign the subdivision improvement agreement.
And all three of those be done at the same time or do we have to do them separately?
Well, it, just make the motion including all of them.
It, it can be combined.
We approve all three of those.
Very good. So it'll be Resolution 2020, 19, 20, and 21?
Actually, the first two are, number one and two are by motion. Item three is resolution. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll second that motion and that resolution.
Very good.
Councilman Ramirez.
Yes.
Councilman Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilman Preciado.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Woolley.
Aye.
Mayor Ovay.
Aye.
Five zero. Okay. Thank you, Fernando. So we move on to Item 11C, Consider Amendment to Agreement Number 1381 with Harvest International for Mechanical and Electrical Design Changes for Avanale Community Center Phase Two and Three.
Mayor, members of the council, this item is presented to you for consideration with regard to the community center that is currently under construction. We, the engineering and the design on Phase One and Phase Two were done over a year ago. And the engineer, the electrical engineer on the project at that time determined that three-phase power was going to be required for the building in order to supply enough power for everything that we were planning, especially the elevator that's supposed to go in the building to provide access to the mezzanine. Once we started working with PG&E, they gave us a very rough estimate of what that was going to cost to put a new power pole as well as a transformer and run all that electrical wiring to the building. They gave us a very rough estimate of about $250,000 for the work. And we started, actually, yeah, around $250,000 and potential savings here and there, depending on our, on our projected energy use. And so we started considering other ways to reduce that cost. And so we went back to the elevator companies and tried to find out whether the elevators themselves could actually be modified or if they, they could accommodate single-phase power, contrary to what the electrical engineer was, was determining. And they said that, yes, it would increase the cost of the elevator, but it was possible to, to run on single-phase power, which means that we would no longer have to incur the cost of putting up a power pole and as large transformer. We are going to have to reduce the, the size of the service panel from about 1,200 amps to 400 amps. But we should have, and we're also going to have to redesign the mechanical equipment, which includes the air conditioning, the heating, some of the other items that, that run on electricity within the, the building. But at the end of the day, we estimate that we would be saving roughly 100, or excuse me, 80 to $125,000 by going this route. We would have this upfront cost of paying the engineer an additional $9,800 as, as provided in the quote that's in the packet to redesign the mechanical equipment and the site plan. But at the end of the day, you know, it would, it would be a tremendous savings compared to what we would have had to spend with three-phase power. So at this time, we are recommending that the council consider and approve the change order for the engineering for Phase Two and Phase Three to modify the plans to reflect single-phase power to the building. And I should note, we did receive, surprisingly, PG&E has been very, has been working very quickly on this, on this project for us, which we appreciate. And so they're kind of on hold right now. They have already provided the drawings based on the three-phase power. And so we let them know that there's a potential that we might go with single phase. And so they're just waiting for us to, you know, let them know which way we're going to go. So that's kind of where we're at. And we're hoping that, that you'll consider this proposal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Fernando. Is there any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know a lot about electricity.
Neither do I.
But if going down to the one phase and running what we're going to be running on that, does that mean if somebody hits, uses the elevator at the same time the coolers or air conditioners are running, that it blows?
No, from my understanding.
My house, if I hit three things on one wall.
Yeah, no, I understand. I think the, the service panel and all the equipment will be sufficient to be able to run concurrently without affecting service to, to other, you know, parts of the building. It would just, you know, we would just have to design all the electrical equipment accordingly. We are still going to have a transformer. It's just not going to be as large. And again, I mentioned the service panel, which is going to be smaller. As everything that I've been told, you know, based on our, we're going to have pretty small loads, relatively speaking. So everything should work fine with single-phase power. And if Scott's still on the line, if, if he has more background on that, feel free to chime in.
That was my next question. What about the kitchen? When we start putting on all the equipment for the kitchen in?
Okay.
Bring their own electric things and plug them in.
That's, Mayor Pro Tim Woolley, the, the single-phase versus three-phase. Three-phase electric motors actually draw less, a little bit less wattage. They're a little bit more efficient. And that's why they initially designed it as three-phase, but with the extra cost to get three-phase to the building. They didn't know. We ran into the same problem when we did the animal shelter with gas, because we do not have PG&E available on hydro. We have rectified that situation because we actually had a meter at the Public Works Building. But three-phase versus single-phase is going to use a little bit more electricity, but we have kind of weighed the costs, three-phase versus single-phase. In the equipment, the equipment's actually cheaper to buy when it's single-phase versus three-phase. So there's initial cost in air conditioners and things like that. The kitchen is actually designed with the stove, the range tops, the ovens, and the water heater are all gas. So there's not going to be an issue with overloading a 400-ounce system on the building, because the kitchen is set up for all of the appliance, all of the big appliances to be gas. Any of the electrical appliances, we will have enough. Our, our, our service panel will be large enough to accommodate everything in the kitchen.
Okay, you say so. I believe you.
Any other question or comment? You know, three-phase is very expensive to, to install. And, you know, I'm, I'm glad to see this and surprised that this engineer insisted on that. Three-phase is primarily used for, you know, high industrial equipment. So, but with that in mind, is there any other questions or comments? If not, we need a motion to approve the change order for this.
Mayor Ovay is actually a resolution to amend the agreement. Thank you.
Very good. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to amend the resolution House President, to go from three-phase to a single-phase.
Very good. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Councilman Ramirez.
Aye.
Councilman Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilman Preciado.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Woolley.
Aye.
Mayor Ovay.
Aye. Five zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we move on to Item 12, which is Correspondence, Announcements, and Closing Comments. Is there any correspondence, please?
None at this time.
Okay, very good. Mr. Councilman Ramirez, closing comments?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to thank Councilman Hernandez for the food, food distribution that took place yesterday along with the help provided by the city. I think, you know, times of uncertainty like we're having right now is a time when we need to work together to help the community. And that was something very good. I saw the, I saw the line was from the Veterans Hall down to San Joaquin and up to the 33, you know, while still following the CDC guidelines, social distancing, face masks and gloves, that was very good for the community. And want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Councilman Hernandez?
Yeah. I want to thank, you know, the, the Police Department for helping out. Chief was out there directing traffic. I also want to thank Public Works. They did a great job. I also want to thank Anthony for just being out there too and helping with the distribution of a poster that he made. And I just, we have all the community out of now. I just want to thank everybody that helped out and make it happen. Because right now, as you guys know, a lot of people are not working. And also due to, I mean, some people are not working because of the issue going on. Also, some people are not working because of the rain. And right now, in Avanale, you know, it's, it's hard times for, for food. So I'm glad that it happened and I hope that happens next month again.
Very good. Thank you. Councilman Preciado, closing comments?
Yes, I just also would like to thank city staff, Police Department. Everybody has a whole, the community is really sticking together. There's also issues with prices with, especially with some of the products like eggs that really, they didn't double or triple the price. So I would like to see if court enforcement is actually taking action, checking those stores to see if they're abiding by the emergency resolution that we approved. And if not, I would like to see officials to call the, the District Attorney, Mr. Vessera's office, and see if, if we need to pursue, you know, and get those businesses back into being proactive with our community. I also believe there was also a food distribution at the Catholic Church. And I also want to thank the community sticking together and helping each other. Also, I would like to see and recommend if there could be a program where we can actually check or see. there could be a program where we can actually check our seniors, like, I believe long term, I thought there was a program for the the charity department have like a, some kind of a program for they would use to go and check seniors to see if they were okay. So maybe something is to be done at this time.
Okay.
I did ask our chief basically the same question, and it is being done, the, are you okay? And it's being done through dispatch, I believe.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mrs. Woolley, closing comments?
I really, I really don't have any. I, the comment about the eggs, Mr. Preciado, just a reminder that this is Easter week, which eggs traditionally do this. I don't think it's right in the midst of all this other stuff, but this is pretty normal for Easter week. Nobody's going to go on Easter egg hunts much, I don't think. But I have no other comments. Thank you.
Okay. City manager, closing comments?
I actually have a couple. Thank you. First, I would like to thank Anthony Lopez and Umberto Bermudez for setting all of this up with all the updated technology. They have been phenomenal to work with, and it's been a real learning curve for me. So I, I can't believe we're sitting here and actually conducting a meeting, yet we're all in different locations. So I do want to thank both of them. I had asked Tony if he would explain exactly. We understand what's going on with the meeting, but there's actually more going on at the theater. And again, I would ask that Tony would provide some comments on how that was done. I would like to thank the city council for your patience and your support. This is, again, totally different, and we've had to transition, you know, back and forth as to how do we make the meetings work? How do we communicate? How do we respond? And still stay within the guidelines of the governor's orders. So thank you all very much for that, for your flexibility. I would like to announce the city hall will be closed tomorrow, April 10th. It's for Good Friday. Otherwise, city hall, the lobby is closed, but city hall and city operations are actually still going forward. We're open Monday through Friday. We have two employees that are currently working from home. Otherwise, all of our employees are on duty. Oh, oh, I do have one comment, a very important one. Mayor Ovaya, working with Tony Lopez this morning, actually, there is a video on the website and also on YouTube, and it's regarding, an address to our community regarding, or at this time, because of the COVID-19 virus. And I have to say, he did a great job. And Tony, I want to thank you too for putting that all together. So if you get a chance, look on YouTube or look on the city website, and you'll hear Mayor Ovaya's address both in English and Spanish. I would like to thank our chief, Rusty Stivers, for his leadership with the EOC and for keeping his certain order and keeping his team together. Again, this is a different time, a different type of emergency that we're dealing with. But he has, he has shown great leadership, and I want to thank him for that. And I want to thank all city staff. It's been difficult, just like it is with every agency, because we're just trying to take care of business and then still trying to abide by all the rules or regulations and orders that are in place. I just really appreciate them and all that they do every day. So thank you all.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mall. City clerk, closing comment?
None at this time.
Okay. I'd just like to thank the community for their patience. And I am very grateful that they are following the CDC guidelines. I was able to go to the credit union today, and I saw that, you know what, without much effort, people were keeping their distance and were listening to the tellers that only so many people inside the building. There were no arguments, just compliance, which is great to see. And I'm sure most of the community will feel that way, that we need to follow these guidelines to curb and eventually, you know, end with this pandemic. So thank you for all the participants, Ms. Veronica. Thank you for all that information. Ms. Yvette, thank you for your presentation as well. And chief, good job. And city staff, to me, you're all essential workers that have performed above and beyond. Tony and Umberto, great job. And this is meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.